Many board members that were there and that you did the speech. So that really meant a lot to the staff.
I heard it from numerous people.
Well, I'm thinking of portraying the light up so I could read my paper. Okay, so I am seeking a motion to approve the strategic planning and approval of the district goals for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Okay, we have a motion by Corey and a second by Mark. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine C, discussion of possible decision on approval of the teachers and support staff eighteen, nineteen handbooks.
I'll do that, Diane.
Thank you.
Basically, I gave you a little summary sheet for each of the entities for the support staff and the teacher handbooks. The one thing Darlene pointed out to me tonight is we talked about it, but I forgot to write down on the teacher handbook, we implemented the $130,000 life policy that we talked about earlier in the year, which would have been in May. So I said that's one item that I forgot to type. But basically, your changes involve updated mission statement, we updated extracurricular pay schedule for the teachers, or on the teachers handbook, for coaches, I should say. We had to raise the deductibles, like I told you in May, because of federal requirements, if you want to have a high deductible health plan. And we changed a bunch of dates. So that was kind of the essence of what happened on that one. The support staff handbook, that basically was updated mission statement, added new support staff compensation schedule, and then we raised the deductibles as is required under the high deductible health plans. And we changed a bunch of dates. So it wasn't a lot of changes, but those would be the changes of note. And there's some policy numbers in there that you'll see that are added. But like I say, those would be the root of your changes. So not a lot of changes in May.
Okay. Those are in the I- broom that was sent to the...
Yeah. And then if you ever want it, you can find it on the website if you look under staff, it's under staff handbooks, and you can see both of them if you ever want to look at it.
With that, I would seek a motion.
I have a question. You said policy changes. Were those highlighted?
There's the numbers, the little numbers. They're put on there.
What changed? Didn't catch that.
I said there's, they put numbers alongside some of the, if you have the handbook.
They link to the NEOLIA policies is what they link to?
Right.
People click right on the link.
Or you can click on it and it takes it right to that.
Yep, right to that, yep.
For your board policy.
Any other questions? If not, I would seek a motion. I have a motion by Madison, a second.
I'll second.
And a second by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Got it. Item nine E. Oh, I'm sorry, nine D. No, we can't do that one. Oh, this is Dennis.
This is Dennis.
Hot up, Dennis.
All right, thank you.
The section of the superintendent search consultant, this is our WASB rep. And in front of you, you guys all received a copy, but he was actually phoned happy as well. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, Diane. So I guess this is your question, if you looked at your information that you received. I also tonight, Amy had put on everybody's table a list of questions for a future candidate that you can look through and pick just a few, you said Dennis, correct? To go through.
Yes, generally, we look at probably eighteen to twenty questions for a one-hour interview so you can gauge the number of questions you need by the time of the interview. It really suggests that you try to pick questions from each of the categories so that you get a nice cross-section and are able to really screen the candidates' knowledge in a variety of areas.
Because I'm privy to this information, but I think for the purposes of this open board meeting, can you just talk a little bit about, we understand you're with WASB, but your experience and what you bring to this conversation? And I think that might be beneficial to some other board members in the audience.
Okay, fine, thank you. Well, my name is Dennis Richards. I'm a retired superintendent. I did the job for about thirty-one years, the last twenty-five on Black River Falls, which, as I mentioned last time, it's very similar district to this district in terms of size. So I'm very familiar with this sort of a school district. I've been doing the search work for about the past ten years. I've probably done at least thirty searches, perhaps more, primarily in western Wisconsin, west central Wisconsin, from the largest districts such as Eau Claire to right up the road to New Auburn, which is probably three hundred students. So I've got a good experience in terms of doing search work. I know a lot of the people who are in the business of school superintendency. And of course, we have a number of consultants that I work with, there are seven of us now. When a former superintendent from Mozenee, Lou Birchwell, he and I actually resurrected the search program with WASB about ten years ago. And I, probably one or two of you remember Lou. But we've gone from the two of us to seven consultants around the state. So we have a good network connecting with other areas of the state to find candidates. For example, I just made a few calls the other day after I was here and picked up a variety of names that would be helpful for us to contact.
Perfect, thank you very much.
And you'll see right now that there was like basically two proposals.
Yes.
One would be to look for the interim that we had discussed, and we'd be looking to interview around the week of September tenth.
That's what we had talked about, that's reasonable. We talked about perhaps using about two weeks for the posting.
Right.
And then interviewing the following week.
Yep. So that we could have somebody possibly by our September meeting. And the second proposal was then coming back sometime later in the fall and looking for a full time for the following school year. So that's what we're going to discuss tonight.
That would be twenty nineteen, you're talking.
Correct, nineteen, yep, correct.
Yeah, in terms of the latter, not knowing exactly the level of services you wanted, I just gave you a cost range based upon a typical search.
Questions?
So I would make motion that we would hire or look, search for the interim as soon as possible, I guess.
So the first proposal.
Interim and then wait on finding someone who needs until.
Okay.
So are you saying your motion just affects the hiring WASB to perform the interim superintendent search and put out the decision on permanent search selection proposal for later that?
Which we have both, so, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Discussion, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion will carry.
May I have just a couple of minutes as long as we want to move this along pretty quickly? We should look at some dates. What I will do is I'll get this posted tomorrow at both the WASB job central site and our site. I have that pretty much ready to go. Brent was very helpful today, giving me some information. So we're ready to go with that. It will be posted tomorrow. If we go the two weeks, that would take us until about the fifth of September. Normally, what we try to do then is gather all of the applicants together, application together, get that information to you, and then meet and discuss the candidate pool and decide who we want to bring in for interviews. Practically speaking, if we would post this until at least the fifth, it might be a little challenge to get you all the information by the even of the sixth. And also, you not really have a good opportunity to look at the applicant. So I'm just wondering if we could begin in the following week, the tenth. Your board meeting is the eighteenth, correct?
Eighteenth?
Nineteenth.
Wait, the dates? Correct.
Well, I'm just wondering, just for the sake of discussion, if we could look at Monday night, the tenth of September, for a date to review the applicant pool. Or Tuesday. If we want to interview that week, or we don't want to get too deep into the week and expect people to come on days notice, I think most of them want to need a couple days.
So maybe the eleventh might look a little better, given that time?
So just so I'm clear on that process, what would a comment interview look like? Is it an entire board interviewing a candidate sitting in that chair in this type of setting? Or is it a smaller group of people interviewing what, or all of them?
Okay. In terms of this process, I would say what we would do is that the entire board meet with the candidate, candidate would sit something like this and take questions from the board.
And then we would most likely have their resume and any information we've collected ahead of time for us to be prepared for the interview.
That's what I'm suggesting. If we try to collect all the applications we've received by the fifth, I'm sure that we can get you all of that information by the end of that week. So that'll all be sent to your personal computers, and you'll just click on a link and all of that will come up. All of the applications, the resumes and whatever. Trust me, it will.
It's not a world.
Oh, it won't, okay.
There are people that don't use computers.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, in that case, if somebody in the district office can download and print a hard copy. When I first started doing this business, I was walking around with boxes. I mean, for example, the night we go through the applicants, you already have two or three boxes full of, it's much easier to send it out now and click on the link and everybody has a chance to look at it on home. But if somebody does not have the technology, certainly somebody vocally could download that, print it and get the hard copies.
Do you participate in that interview process?
Well, I'd like to be part of the selection of who we're willing to interview. Not that I'm going to select those individuals, but it's nice if I'm here and talk to you about those candidates. I'd like to do that. Some districts have us, we prefer to be part of the interview process, but some districts, because of cost, just decide to do it on their own. So I'm open to either of those options.
I'm only bringing those things up right now because we're not going to be together to get a, oh, here's the process before that.
Right.
So I like the idea of having our consultant in this process with thirty years of superintendent experience help guide us through that process and potentially ask some follow-up questions that you think would be useful to us in making that decision. So that would be my preference.
Dennis, when you look for something like this for just the interim, do you also have like members of the community and staff involved at the same time? Or is it just the board that you mainly deal with for that?
Generally, with an interim position, it's the board.
Okay.
As I mentioned when I was here last time, if I were talking to you about the permanent supervisory, would be strongly recommending multiple parties involved.
Okay, okay, okay.
My last question for you is, do you, what system, is it a point system as we, let's say we're interviewing six people instead of at the end being like, okay, all in favor of this person? So is there some type of matrix or tool that you have available to us to help us score and rank those individuals interviewing?
Well, we have a rubric to assess application results. We won't have that for the interim process, but I could perhaps give you some of that. Generally, we find gut feelings as much as anything. People listen to the applicants, they discuss what they heard, what they liked in candidate. Ideally, we have every question answered in terms of what we want to hear. But that's a perfect world, doesn't often happen.
So by the, what's it say, the eleventh right now, are you asking us then to look through those questions and try to pick some for that? Or are you, that time you're just going to bring us the candidates for us to interview at a later time, and then we go through the questions on the eleventh as well?
Generally, what we would do is the night that we select who we're going to interview, we could finalize the questions.
Got it, okay.
Are we set on the eleventh, or was there another option?
Well, we were talking about the... And it's the weekend, my daughter just gets it.
I can't agree here on the eleventh.
I was going to ask, would it, I mean, the tenth would be, it doesn't matter personally, but if we want to interview the week of the tenth, we'd have to make, you know, I'd be making the calls either the evening of the tenth or the morning of the eleventh, getting them back in here on a Tuesday or Wednesday night, unless you're willing to work a weekend.
I mean, I can be here on the tenth if you're willing.
Can you do Wednesday and can you do the twelfth? Can everybody else do the twelfth?
I believe the twelfth is the back to, back to, back to school, all staff picnic.
I think the tenth might be a problem for the interviews. I mean, ideally, you wanted to try to select somebody for the eighteenth, right? We may or may not get there given this conversation right now.
Well, that'd be probably too far. We want to pick somebody for the night of the board meeting. I'm fine, we can go with the tenth.
Is it tenth for everybody?
Well, that's pretty cool, everyone to see how they look first.
Okay. Around the room, Kevin, tenth?
Tenth or eleventh, I'm hoping.
Mark? No, what? No tenth or eleventh? Okay.
I think I'm available.
Both?
I think.
Kelly?
Yes, I'm both, I'm available.
Mike? Okay.
Yeah, both.
Tenth, all?
Tenth, Corey?
I'll thirteen.
Okay, well, let's, Dennis, let's shoot for the tenth for right now, and then I'll just follow everybody in the email and just kind of watch it from there.
Okay, and on the tenth, we review the applicants and select those that we're going to offer an interview to, and also select the questions that will be used.
Right.
When would we be receiving their background information and their resumes?
I'm hoping to get that to you the sixth or the seventh.
Okay, so even those of us that can't attend that meeting where we would have the ability to provide some input or at least have reviewed the candidates?
Yes. Everyone will get the same information. Again, I'm indicating on the vacancy notice that it's going to be open until filled, but practically speaking, I'm also indicating when the board would like to interview so people will know that if they procrastinate, they may get...
Missed the interview.
Missed. So I'm going to shoot that, in my mind, pretty much wrap up the application process by the fifth of September and have our office in Madison get you materials on the sixth or the seventh. That would give you the weekend to look at the materials, and we'd meet on the tenth. And then, let's say that this all comes together like we just discussed, do we want to try to interview the week of the tenth? I mean, there's an all-school ticket on the twelfth, there's a couple of people who have conflicts.
Back to the tenth, what time?
Whenever it works to you.
I, you know, I mean, six o'clock, seven o'clock?
Dennis, we don't want to go out as far as Thursday of that week. We're pushing it then, right?
Well, you're not going to interview, right?
That's what I mean.
If we don't meet on the applications until Thursday, we obviously aren't going to interview until the following week. And it may just be that you're going to have to have a special meeting.
We may race to have to die instead of rushing.
Yeah, the eighteenth might...
Look at Brent's face, does he want to run another meeting?
I would say don't rush it.
That's what I'm saying, don't rush it.
I would agree with you, Kelly.
I think if we, if at some point in time in the week of the tenth, we evaluate the resumes, narrow down the individuals that we interviewed, who we'd like to interview, then the interviews should be the week of the seventeenth at some point. And regardless of when our board meeting is, I think...
That's mine, that works for me too.
Okay, so we know the interviews will not be on the eighteenth because that's your regular board meeting.
Right.
Yeah, but we're going to the following week.
Well, that's just for the interviews, but we could push it a little bit later in that week, the review. Okay.
What time are you looking on the tenth?
Sixth. That gives a little bit more time. We'll shoot for that now, if anything changes, I'll let you know, Dennis or Brent, right?
Okay. We are, you know, it's all dependent upon the number of applications we receive, but I don't see that being a long meeting. I would think sixty to ninety minutes we got to be able to have. Sometimes the most difficult thing is landing on a question, not so much a regular interview.
Right.
So if you can sort of go through that list, and I would encourage you to write your own questions, there's nothing unique about those. In fact, you might want to think about questions with a little tilt towards the interim aspect. In other words, for example, how you see yourself performing this job as an interim in comparison to how you might approach the job and perform that position. As we said, it's likely that if the outside candidate, an outside candidate would be considered, he or she would not likely live here. So what does that mean to you, what the person's going to do? So it might be useful to think of some of those kinds of questions as well.
So the process is, though, we'll select the questions, they will all see the same questions?
Yes.
Okay. Question would be then is, is that in an environment like this, if you have one first candidate that goes through the questions, and you have five other candidates in the audience, how do you, how do you handle that?
Well, they're wrong, it would be a closed session. It would be a closed session.
Those other candidates need to be sequestered.
It was one at a time, Kevin.
Yes.
Like, I want to go last.
No, we'll ask the same questions of each of the candidates. Sometimes, you know, a response may trigger a follow-up question. That's okay, but I want to make sure that all the candidates answer all those questions so that at the end of the night, we don't say, gosh, I really liked Jane's answer on special ed, and so this is a way of it, we never asked Jim that question because we didn't get to it. So everybody gets the same amount of time, everybody gets the same questions.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion by Kelly, and, oh, we did, we approved this already? I'm sorry, Amy? We're all good? Okay. Long discussion. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. We'll be going on it, and we'll be in touch, and we'll just plan, unless they are otherwise, for Monday night. I'll be communicating with Brent and with you, Diane, so you know where we're at, what the applicant pool looks like. If you have any questions, keep that to me.
Got it.
I think there's probably a business card in back of each room, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call. And I'm a, of course, I'll be happy to answer any of them.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
And we are moving on to the building committee report.
Okay, the building committee meeting left tonight at six thirty. And we've looked at our agenda with our minutes, and we went on to new business. And five A is the energy efficiency projects, and I'll let Steve touch on that and tell us where we're at.
So, you know, we're starting school year shortly, so our goal is to get the buildings open and operating, which we will be doing. Part of that is, we did a lot of replacement of major equipment in your packets. You can see some pictures that are in there. We add new cooling to the high school and middle school. That is a feature in the game, we show it, we put it up on the roof. So those systems are being started this week, and they'll continue on basically all the way through the following week. So we'll be up and running when school starts. But pieces of the puzzle will be controlled, things of nature. So we'll be tweaking that, balancing it for probably next, you know, month, basically. It takes time to make that all happen, but we'll be operational for school. But otherwise, we're doing quite well. We've had a lot of upgrades for electrical side as well, for the middle school, that was completed on Saturday. And so now our high school and middle school have electrical connections, so we are able to power all our new equipment. We are waiting for two more pieces that are being hopefully manufactured, complete this weekend, shipped up, hopefully by Wednesday, we're going to cram them on the roof right away as soon as they come. So that should complete us for all of our equipment for the building. Other than that, we've been actually going pretty smoothly and looking operational.
Thank you. Item eleven, personnel committee report.
Yes, personnel committee gathered at six thirty, and we reviewed the agenda, approved the agenda, and the administration was all represented to assist us with the agenda to make. In the action, new business items for consideration here for the main board, we recommend item five B, additional temporary special ed aid for the 2018, 2019 school year be approved. Sounds like there's an individual need that needs to be accommodated, and this would, part-time position would accommodate that individual's need.
So you're making that a formal motion?
Yes.
I think that, or I'll second that.
Okay, a second by Jess. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Okay, and extracurricular hires, went through the details there, it sounds like we're at full staff and pretty up to date with a lot of things. We had one opening with the director for auditorium, is that right? One opening there, and that's all of it. So that would conclude the personnel committee report.
Thank you. Item twelve, finance committee report.
Tonight at the finance committee meeting, we approved the voucher list for August twenty first, twenty eighteen, for three million sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, point nineteen cents. Being that it is so much for this time of the year, there's some of the construction that we are going to be needing. Bozen and... And I would so move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike, and a second by Matt. Roll call, please. Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Tomcheck?
Yes.
Zebro?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Keywiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, the same thing, we discussed the treasury report for a month ending July thirty-first, twenty eighteen, dated August eighth, twenty eighteen. And I would so move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Matt. Roll call, please. Keywiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Tomcheck?
Yes.
Zebro?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Sorry, Mike. Yeah. I apologize. I guess if you want to bring it back later and...
What is the, the treasury report? Oh, that one.
Oh, that's coming next. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's how, that's how I know. That's item C.
Okay. In the last report, we just discussed it, and it was just for discussion.
That was a big break.
Yeah, I was looking at the purchase order. There was a comment, it says, we'll pick, you know, you've got your list in then here.
Yeah.
Says we'll pick up a freight factory along with weights, says we'll be ordering another purchase order, so no freight charge added.
Yeah, basically, what I've got is the shipping, if we buy, even just from Eau Claire, that shipping is like eight hundred plus dollars. And then they're also getting some weights, like I told the finance committee, and we just actually figured out what weights we were ordering last week. And they would pick them up in a truck because that shipping is like six hundred. So basically, you can rent a cube van from like Spensky, and you can save about a thousand plus bucks on shipping. Is basically what it's transpired with that note.
So all of these items here, is this, are those the parts of the, of the rig?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So then that'll all get put together, and those are all the individual bars and stuff, and I can, and...
And the company's out of Eau Claire, they actually make them in the old tire plant in Eau Claire, down in the valley, I'm an Eau Claire supplier, but... What, at the old river round plant, Mike knows what I'm talking about. There used to be a brewery across the street, too. They particularly affectionate. But anyway.
So this nine thousand forty-two dollars, that's the total for this whole thing?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yep, exactly.
Well, the true need is with those other things on a different purchase order, that's over ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah. We discussed that, for what it's worth, in our group. And each, the fact that the totality of the purchases is over ten thousand dollars, but they're being purchased from different individuals, which Brent was really transparent with us about, like, this is how we're purchasing this. And I will share with the whole board something I shared with the finance committee when discussing this. And that's my position on what our role is in a discussion or a decision about an item like that, which is, I know things and what the new age best fitness stuff, there's people a lot smarter than me that have picked that out and they're making recommendations for changes through the curriculum committee, which is the curriculum budget, which is where this is being funded out of. And there, it's not my job to tell them what to put where. My job is to measure at the end, does it work? And is it a good thing? And has it achieved the objectives of the gym class system for our kids? And does it work better for all the kids in our school that want to use it? I have every intention of evaluating that. But getting into what are you buying and how? And are you getting rubber bumper weights? Are you getting steel weights? I really don't care about that. I want what's best for our kids, that's funded in our budget. And as long as that's the case, I have a lot of faith in our staff to make a decision and pick that and figure out what it is. And I personally want to stay out of making decisions for them that they went to school for those issues, not me. I'll second.
Further discussion? Comments?
I do have a question. Do we go and get other types of bigs for rigs or...
Like Rogue is another big vendor. That was another film that we looked at.
I do have a question, right? Who's driving the truck to work at the...
Actually, Kelly, it would either be your son or it would be one of the coaches. But I believe your son would be the driver of the twenty-foot rig. And I actually, it's all fits in there, too, so...
We insured for them.
That's what I'm wondering now.
Okay, any other further discussion? All right, we will move on to other reports. WASB.
Okay, and that would be me. And Diane, myself, and Michael went to the maintenance workshop in Towne Hawk. We found it, and we find it very informative. There are some things we covered in here that we have been trying to improve upon with this board. And we also...